Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting. It is 6:02 PM. It is Wednesday, April 14th. This is the meeting of the Board of Select Board, the Town of Rutland. At this point in the meeting, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the virtual meeting disclaimer.
Still moved.
The motion is second, any further discussion, hearing none, we'll have a roll call, vote stillings.
Oh, exactly.
Nichols.
Aye.
Whitman.
Whitman, aye.
And Clark.
Aye.
We're city, I, motion carried unanimously. We do not have any minutes, treasury warrant, and payroll this week because it is an off week. We do have public comment on the agenda. Is anyone here for public comments before we address the few items we do have? If you are here for public comment, please use the hand raise feature. And we will let you in. I don't see anyone here for public comment. We have on the agenda today simply the discussion regarding the regional agreement, the town meeting start time, and the placing of articles on the warrant. I have been informed that the Subcommittee of the School Committee, tasked with reviewing the suggested changes, has postponed their meeting until the 28th. What I would like to do, if it's okay, because I do want to be respectful of everyone's time, and because we have a particularly light agenda, we have two Jeffs right now in the meeting, which is really entertaining to see. Because we have a light agenda next week, we do have to meet next week on Tuesday to sign treasury warrant and payroll. That is something we do have to meet about. I am suggesting we move item 126, if it's amenable to the Board, to next week's meeting, which would allocate us more time this evening for the warrant and discussions related to.
So moved.
Second.
I don't think to table an item, I don't think we need a motion. As long as there are no disagreements within the Board, I think we can do it without having to vote.
Mr. Chairman. My only comment to that is part of that discussion, I thought the Town Manager of Holden asked me if one of our select board members would serve on the task force. I know you volunteered, and I know that at least one member said she was fine with it. Do we want to get that cleared away so at least I can send them who the member of our select board will be that serves on that committee?
Yeah, I volunteered to do it. You know, if anyone else would like to, we could certainly have that discussion. Otherwise, I don't think we need to vote if everyone's agreeable to it. I know Leah is on, I think, a lot of task force in town right now, and Jeff's involved in a bunch of different committees. You know, and we have a lot of meetings that everybody is attending, so I'm more than happy to take it on, unless anyone has any objections. And I don't think we need to vote if that's the case, but I'll leave it to the Board.
Hey, go for it Mitch.
No objections. Let him have it.
Sorry, just for, so that anybody that's watching or listening knows, this is, can you or Ron just explain what the task force is, just kind of for public? Because I know we got the brief email about it, but just for clarification or public knowledge.
Yeah, Ron, you want to go ahead? I know you've had those conversations with Peter, so.
On a regular basis, I've been organizing meeting of all the Town Administrators and the Town Manager of Holden to discuss the regional school district agreement and the impact of the assessments on all the towns. And clearly, for the first time, I guess, a number of years, Holden is very frustrated as well with the process and the potential impact on their town. The Select Board of Holden has made it very clear that they're unhappy and they want to set up a task force of all the towns to start talking about how they look at the regional agreement and see if there's some way we can resolve the spending issues. So they are doing this task force with at least one select board member of every town and the Town Administrator, Town Manager of every town to start looking at this. Because like us, they can't deal with this on a every year basis of having major problems with their budget as a result of what the school district is doing. So that's the, they're gonna look at the regional town agreement, they're gonna look at the process and figure out how to deal with this ongoing situation.
Really, I think Leah too, to, based on some of the Holden Select Board's conversations and conversations with leadership over at Holden, I want to say one of the main takeaways, not to be antagonistic, but it's to improve communication. Because I think that that's something that's needed across the district, particularly when it comes to budgetary issues. You know, we do have a lag time sometimes in the materials we get. Information comes in late, and obviously, at this point, we're scrambling, FinCom's scrambling. So the improvement of communications is also something that I get the impression that that would be helpful for. I could take those updates and bring them back to the Board. We can have discussions here and just make sure that all the towns are kind of working together towards resolving some of these issues.
I think, I mean, I think in my email response to you Mitch and Ron, I just asked that we get those updates, obviously as applicable, but just as much for the Board as well as for the public. Just, I think there's a lot of public interest in this, and so to keep everyone as informed as possible. So I appreciate it, thank you.
We agree.
Okay, great. Alright, so we'll move to regional agreement discussion to next week. I would encourage all of you to take a look at that document and provide commentary and markup. I know the only time I provided feedback so far, I think in an official capacity, was Holden at this point. With some of the other towns taking a little bit more time to review, as we all are in the budgetary and town meeting process. So, thank you. So the only other agenda item we have tonight is the placing of articles on the warrant. I think all of you were, or at least our Board, or I think all of you were in FinCom last night. I saw everybody's name on the screen. So I did reach out and invite FinCom. We had talked about it to, as a scheduling thing, to invite them to our meeting on Tuesday if they have any concerns or issues. You know, similar, the goal was to have a process similar to what we did in the fall, where we met with FinCom prior to going to town meeting. They couldn't make tonight's meeting because of a scheduling conflict, but we will have that conversation so that the Boards are able to communicate with each other about this moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, a possible suggestion, and it's up to you, it's a process kind of issue. You really don't have to vote on each of these items you go along. What you could do, if you choose to, is set up a consent counter. So if everybody agrees in an article, they could just say they agree, and then at the end, have one vote for the consent counter. It's just a quicker way, if you choose to, utilize that tool.
What, for tonight?
Yes, if you want to, you can just have a consent counter, say, if with no objection, we'll add item number one, article number one to consent counter, and then have one vote on everything if you wanted to do it that way. It's just an easier way to do it.
Right, I think we have a moderately light warrant considering annual. And I really think what we could do, and I'll suggest a process and see what the Board feels about it. We can go through each item quickly. If there's any major concerns, we can talk about those. I don't think there will be any, based on how Fall Town Meeting unfolded. Ron and his team did a pretty good job in getting the language firmed up to put on the warrant. And then we can take them as a slate at the end, unless there were issues that the Board had with any particular warrant item. We could discuss those individually. Does the Board have any other suggestions as to how they'd like to run that?
It sounds good Mitch.
Okay, so then I guess we'll go ahead and do that. The easiest way, if it's possible, and this is maybe more of a Peter question, is to share the screen and we can just run through them.
Mr. Chairman, Selectman Nichols is trying to get your attention to ask a question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand up.
Well, yeah, I definitely want to talk further on the override warrant question. So we'll go.
But I think, I think what we can do, Lyndon, is when we get to that item, we can either reserve time at the beginning or the end, depending on how you want to take it. And we'll just get some of these low hanging fruits, which again, most of this stuff is pretty basic in terms of managing government, and we can just get those out of the way.
Thank you.
Do it another. Okay, so do we want to take this article by article? Quickly?
Sure, why not? Head first.
Alright, Ron, you want to run us through this?
Sure, just kind of move the screen as I go along. The first article is really simple, just to hear the annual reports of Town Office Committees, that's a standard article every year. Article two is an article to, and what we think this year will be, to transfer money from leftover money in accounts from this current year to the snow and ice line to balance it, instead of using free cash, because we need free cash in the fiscal '22 budget. So it's a common article, but the plan is, like I say, to take money out of accounts that have too much money and at the end of fiscal year 2021. Any questions on that article?
I just, if I may, I have a question about this. I've been listening to the FinCom meetings, and I just want to make sure that you're reasonably sure that that's going to be able to come out of current fiscal year underspent accounts and not need to go into the free cash, just based on the FinCom discussions.
So, so the answer is, I'm reasonably sure, I've had a conversation with the Town Accountant, and we believe that it can be done. For instance, the reserve account still has 250 grand alone in that account that we haven't tapped into. I can't say that some emergency is going to happen over the next couple of months. But because of COVID, some accounts may not have got spent. For instance, you know, the money in my line item for the MMA, and the money in your line item for MMA, didn't get spent because it got canceled. So yes, we believe that there will be leftover money to be able to do that. But if it changes, and at the end, we'll have to adjust for that if that's the case. But, but at this point in time, I think we're okay. Any other questions on this one? And next article? Too fast, oh yeah, there you go. This one is, is put on by the Town Accountant. I told everybody that $120,000 of free cash was left to utilize in the future. That's because the Town Accountant knew, as part of the state requirement, when they set up the enterprise fund for water sewer, that there were some imbalances. And he set aside a sum of money to make sure that that met all the state requirements to take the money out of free cash to, I guess, rebalance this new water sewer account. So it meets Department of Revenue regulations, and that's what this does. This is a Town Accountant article. Any questions on that one? Next. Article number four is the standard vote to fix salaries and compensation of elected officers. You'll see the details of that in the, in the actual motion that's brought forward. This takes care of, assuming there's any money to pay for the stipends for Selectmen and Board of Assessors, and Board of Health and Planning Board, and of course, the Town Clerk is a one elected official. So we'll see how that ends up at the budget time, but that's what that article does. Unless there's any questions on that one?
If I may Mitch, I have a question. I know it says subject to an override, how does that? And I know that this is one of the areas that FinCom has been addressing to try to cut that roughly $500,000 if the school budget passes and the override doesn't.
Was, was, we're talking about Article four?
Yeah, that's the next article, I was talking about Article four firstly, but we're gonna get.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
We're next. Any Article four first?
Any questions on Article four before we move on? Sorry Leah, I just got confused with the.
Nope, sorry, I got confused too.
Being ahead of the class Leah, you know? Alright.
So Article number five is reserved for the town budget, and quite frankly, at this time, I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like. It is going to be subject to the override, because what will happen is, as you know, you guys voted to put a $500,000 override question on the ballot. So what I expect will happen here is the Finance Committee will, at the end of their process, detail $500,000 in cuts. And those cuts, if the override is voted to approve it, then there won't be any of those cuts, but if the override goes down, those cuts would have to be made. And that also could be subject to whatever happens with the school vote, if they vote down the school budget or not. So I'm not, again, I don't know what it's going to look like, because the Finance Board is still working it, but we needed to have this spot set up for when they're done to put it into the budget. Any questions, and Leah would be happy to answer whatever you've got there?
Yeah, sorry, actually, my question was for Article four, because I thought one of the FinCom potential cuts is the compensation for a lot of the elected officials. So I was just wondering, because that obviously, those positions, I would assume, would be contingent on the override passing also. So I'm not sure how that article would work if the override doesn't pass. If we need to have language in there for that or not.
A good point, and I will look at that, and I think you may very well be right, because you're absolutely right that that. Well, I guess, I guess, no, I'm not sure, because if that's not part of the $500,000 of cuts that they outline, then it wouldn't be subject to the override. So I guess the question is, depending upon where that $500,000 of cuts are made to the override, it may or may not be subject to the override. So that, that's, I think I will put a note on that, just to remind myself that that's not locked in yet, until I see what the Finance Committee does with the budget. So thank you, that's, it's a good point, and we need to at least put a kind of reminder, we have to see what FinCom does before, and it could be subject to the override, depending upon what they do. Does that make sense to you Leah?
Yeah, thank you.
It's a note I gotta add to that, so I'll add that note.
I see hands from Lyndon and Jeff, so we'll go in that order, Lyndon and Jeff.
Yeah, this is what I wanted to talk about, because when we were talking about the override, we were talking about the excessive increases with the schools and the impact it's had over the years and the significant impact it has on this. And it was my understanding we were going to do an override, tying it to the school budget so that the residents could make a choice on whether they wanted to support paying additional taxes to support the school by tying it into all these other budgets. When I said I didn't support the override, it's because I do not support and think it was an acceptable increase in the school budget. By saying I'm not supporting the override, I'm not saying I don't support the need for the other departments. And I thought it was tied to the school, not tied to all these other budgets, and I have a concern about that. Because my fear is that it won't, it won't pass, it very rarely passes anyway, and it's tying everything into it.
So, thank you Lyndon, and that frankly is a very good question. Let me first start off by saying, when I sent you the documents for the overriding explanation, in that document, it stated the language of what the override would look like. And in that document, it said it would be the town and the school system would be in the override. When discussing that article with, or that language with the Town Attorney, he suggested that we also add BayPath in, because those are all the categories of the budget. So that was part of what I told you guys. Now, the logic in the document that I sent you for that discussion, now, the logic for that is this, is that if you just tie it into one, let's say the school system, a lot of people effectively that might support the school system, might vote for the override, and a lot of people that are angry at the school system may vote against the override. And if the override goes down, unless it goes down in two towns, the impact is going to be on the town services. Because as you know, in order to, for the override to pass, it has to be effectively, two towns have to, well, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. The school budget to go down, it requires two towns to vote against the school budget. So the, if we don't vote down the school budget, the impact is not going to be on the school budget, the impact is going to be on all the town employees. So the article is written, would encourage people who support the schools to vote for the override, town employees to vote for the override, and those people who support BayPath to vote for the override. So everybody is trying to work together, but at the end of the day, really, the only people that are going to be impacted is the municipal side of government.
I mean, I understand that, I mean, we deal with this every year, it's always the same thing. And we always understand that if the school budget passes and we're forced into paying the school's request, that it's going to come out of all the other departments. So that's, that's the same case every year that we've dealt with. The concern I have is the significant increase with the decreasing enrollment and that we're making a statement that the reason that we're in this position is because of the Wachusett school budget and its excessive increases in its budget. And it should be, in my opinion, it should be tied to that, which is causing the major problem with our budgeting.
And you are.
Like I said, every year, I mean, I've done this, I did it for many, many years, and it's always been the exact same story. It's a much larger deficiency that we're working with this year, but it's always the same story every year. And the reason that we're in a much higher one is because of that we passed a school budget that was excessive, that we couldn't afford last year, and now we're continuing to it, and we're going down the same road. And it's all because we're letting the school budget bully us into draining our departments. And I think it's important that we highlight the fact that that's where these decreases are coming. We already decreased our departments, so we're going to decrease our departments and increase people's taxes. And I think that's completely unacceptable.
So, I guess just to wrap this up, Lyndon, if I'm hearing this correctly, you'd like the override itself to be tied directly to the school budget. However, if the school budget passes on town meeting floor, what would be the purpose of having the override tied to the school budget? Because the town has already passed it. So whether the override passes or not, you're still going to have to cut municipal departments, are you not? I mean.
If, if it passes, but if it doesn't, and the school decides to go with a smaller amount, whatever, you know, the difference between the override and what we accepted, then they can, they can accept that budget.
So, a couple of comments, right? And you gotta kind of distinguish the two separate issues here, right? I think there's going to be a huge effort, I hope there's a huge effort, at town meeting to vote recommending down the school budget as proposed, because the assessment, as you point out, Lyndon, is excessive, right? So that happens at the town meeting, and I had a conversation with all the Town Administrators in the area, because I asked that, can a motion, you have to bring forward the actual school assessment, what they brought forward, right? That's required under the school agreement. And I asked the other Town Administrators, I said, well, can you have a motion, an amendment on the floor, putting in a lower amount? And they all told me no. And they said, oh, that was tested in Rutland, and it was determined that you couldn't do that. So I called up Lauren Goldberg from KP and asked her that question, and her answer was, was no. Yeah, it was yes. As long as you bring forward the original amount of the assessment, then anyone can get up on the floor and amend it to a lower amount. That can be done, but you still need two towns to vote it down in order for it to go to what's called a 112 budget and have, as you just described, the school system go back and, you know, look at that assessment and potentially lower it. In her conversation, she pointed out something that I thought was interesting. Let's assume that, you know, we lowered by $300,000, and let's assume that Paxton voted no too, and they only wanted it lowered by $100,000. If the school system convinces Paxton to vote for the $100,000 that they wanted, Rutland's still on the hook, in other words, with a higher amount, because they've gotten four of the five towns to vote for the budget. So that, so that's the kind of process with that. Now, you've got to remember that the override question doesn't come up until after town meeting. If, and right now, even the press release, well, the information that went on today talked about the reason for the deficit. I think that most of us would agree that the significant reason for the deficit is the school budget over assessment. I think at least the Board of Selectmen and Finance Board are in that mode of thought, most, most members. So, you know, the voting for the override, I think if the school budget gets passed that night, then it's really important to vote for the override to save the town's services. And you would want school people who are voting for the override to support that override, I would hope. That way, there's a better chance of that override passing. If the school system votes for, you know, they get the school system approved, and the override comes up, no incentive whatsoever for any school people to vote for the override, they just let the town services die, right? So, you know, the concept of the override ballot question was that we're one town, all parties, BayPath, the town government, and the schools are all in one boat, and we need everybody to work together to pass the override, particularly if the school budget doesn't get voted down. I hope that makes sense, and there's a variety of different ways you can go with those. But I think that that's the, the best way to protect the town services, to have it set up that way.
I just feel it's going to give people the incentive to pass the school budget, thinking that people will pass the override because it's tied into the other budgets. And overrides historically have not passed, and it's going to significantly, no matter what the size is, there are many, many families that cannot afford increases in their taxes. People have lost jobs, I mean, go talk to the churches and the food banks. People think there isn't poverty in this town, there is, there is needs. People cannot afford the increase in the taxes. And the only, the problem is that you get people that go to the town meeting for the school, but you get people that go to the elections that will stand up against it, but they don't necessarily make it to the town meeting. So it just doesn't work that way typically.
And truthfully, I'm hoping, and I have to be careful, because I'm explaining it very clearly to department heads and employees, the impact of not voting down that school budget would be devastating to town services.
Can we, can we just be clear here for a second though, about, we're talking like this is, I see your hand Jeff, and I appreciate you being patient. We're talking about this being a zero sum game between the schools and the municipalities. There, in reality, even if this is, and I think we're all in agreement, the school assessments have been way higher than 2.5% for a long time, right? Despite enrollment being down the whole thing. The issue though, is that this particular year, because of years of kicking the can kind of down the road, and the Boards, and our Board in particular, not heeding FinCom advice in past years, we're at a point where the school, there's no number realistically the school could reduce their budget to, to where we would not have to make cuts. It's a huge number that we're talking about in terms of the deficit. So it's just we're talking about the degrees of cuts that we're going to have to make, I think, right? So I just want to make that clear, it's not, it's not like this is kind of a one or the other. I mean, there's still a lot of financial management and massaging to do, to get to a point where everything, everyone's comfortable. But how much would you expect the school to cut off of the budget, even if the budget fails? So that's just something to be mindful of moving forward. Jeff, I don't see you anymore, but I'm assuming you're still on. Oh, there you are, okay, go ahead.
I appreciate that, and I could not agree with Lyndon more. Well, well said, and totally, totally agree with his position. I would like to ask two questions, Mr. Chair, if I could. One relates to Article four, and one to Article five. With the exception of the Town Clerk and the full-time Board of Health staff, we, we should definitely be eliminating any stipend to our elected officials.
It's already done, that's being proposed, and I think that, I think the Board would agree with that, but I.
Absolutely. Is there a way to better word this article so that it doesn't sound like, you know, a $600 stipend is contingent on a 2.5 override? Is there a better way to reword this, or at least our position, that, you know, we're really only talking about full-time positions?
The press release I sent you guys all.
That's not what people see at a town meeting.
But at town meeting, there's going to be, again, I don't know what it's going to look like, because the Finance Committee hasn't finished their job. I would suspect it's going to look something like, these, this $500,000 of cuts, or these $500,000 of items that are put forward in the budget are subject to an override. If you, if the override doesn't go through, those $500,000 of items that are outlined by the Finance Committee are all going to be cut. That's the way I expect it to look, but again, the Finance Committee hasn't drafted it, but in my conversations with the Finance Chair, that's the expectation that I have.
It reads, it reads differently.
Again, this is a, this is a placeholder Jeff, this is not what we're going to have. This is just a placeholder until the Finance Committee gives me what this is going to look like.
Alright, that's my two cents. And Mitch, I could ask one question related to Article five. Probably a FinCom question, but are we positively sure that none of the FEMA money that we received for relief can't be used at all for any of this budget at all?
I think we're talking about two different things here. So FEMA money, FEMA money, as I think you're describing it, cannot be used to balance the operating budget. The, I think you're asking about this new, I'm trying to think of the name of it, the Relief Act.
Yeah.
Passed through Congress, it's a million nine. They haven't sent out the regulations for that, Jeff, so I don't know. If you use that money, because it's one-time money, you might put us in a bigger situation, a bigger problem situation next year. So when, once we find out what that money could be spent upon, me and Karen have been discussing doing things like, if we could pay down debt, then it might reduce the debt payment in the 2022. then it might reduce the debt payment in the twenty twenty-two budget. If instead of leasing cars that are in the twenty-two budget, we pay off those cars, that might be able to reduce the twenty-two budget. But if you just, let's say, took four hundred thousand dollars of that money and put it into the budget, you would have an additional four hundred thousand dollar deficit in fiscal year twenty-three. So me and Karen are looking at that closely, and once we know what the money can or can't be spent on, we're gonna reevaluate and see uh, how to how to deal with it. But we may not, in fact, have those regulations until after town meeting. We just don't know. Um, so I I can't answer it because I I don't, you know, nobody knows how that money could be spent yet. Called the American Relief Act.
Okay, um, Lyndon.
Uh, yeah, and if I'm hearing Jeff correctly, and I agree, if if this, I I don't feel comfortable with having the stipends tied into an override. I mean, we've already made cuts in the departments, and even if the override passes, I don't want to increase pieces people's taxes to pay for stipends. So I don't, if there's some way of not tying that to the override, I mean, if for some reason there's a windfall of funds and the budget is in much better condition, those can be be reinstated at a later date. But I don't think they should be tied into an override.
I think we can take, we can make those separate articles. The intent, obviously, of this article primarily was the town clerk's position, which is a full-time elected salary. So we could separate out, if you would like, and it sounds like that's the vote consensus.
And the health inspector.
I'm sorry. That's right. You're right, Jeff, and the health inspector. So again, this article is just standard language that's meant to protect. I don't think anybody had in mind this particular article for our our stipends. But we can, I think, Ron, can we just make that a separate article?
Yeah, I I don't think it's an article question. I think Lyndon's right in his comments. I think that's more of telling the Finance Committee that you don't want to tie the five hundred thousand dollars into the stipend, because that's what the Finance Committee is gonna do when they decide the five hundred thousand dollars of cuts. That's where it's gonna be dealt out with. So Lyndon, I would say to you to send an email to the Chair of the Finance Committee stating your concern. And they will, that's something they're gonna have to address when they decide what five hundred thousand dollars of cuts they're gonna target directly towards that override. Does that does that help you, Lyndon?
Yeah, I I'll do that. Thank you.
Indefinitely, I mean, separate it because it is wording like this that begins the filibuster on the floor uh, for people, but it 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 could be the smallest amount. And that's what it's gonna, you know, extend the town meeting uh, on and on and on. And and to have to explain it there is just not separate it right now, make it clear. Thank you.
Any other questions on on Article Number Five? Hey, thank you. Article Number Six? Hey, so this is just Bay Path. This is the money uh, that we pay the annual assessment for Bay Path and the actual dollar amount will be in the motion. Uh, that's a fixed amount, so we know what that is, but uh, some other ones are not like locked in yet, but that's the Bay Path. You'll see the note says there's eleven new students going to Bay Path. And the assessment is about a hundred and five thousand dollars more than last year. Any questions on Bay Path? Article Number Seven? So this is an interesting one. The the next four articles are very interesting, and it's a it's a decision that I really wanted the Select Board to look at. So the these articles have been done two ways. There's four components of the Massachusetts School District funding mechanism. There's local contribution, debt service, transportation, and what they call operations. In past town meeting warrants, uh, in some cases, they were done as one lump sum amount for the school system. And other ones, they were broken down into the four segments. Uh, as I said, you know, minimum local contribution, which is, you can't really change it, it's fixed. Uh, the same thing is is sort of true of the debt assessments and the transportation. The one article I you'd have to go down, I think it's Article Eleven or something, is on operations. That's the one article that's not a fixed amount that people can vote on. The advantage of putting them all as one amount is that the number, the dollar amount of the school budget assessment will be one high number that people can look at and say, okay, it's high and we think it should be cut. When you break it down like this, the only one that they're gonna be able to vote on is the operations component. And that number will be lower because it'll take all these other costs out. So this is kind of a a strategic decision that the board needs to make. I I first put it in as a some a single lump then lump sum of one of the school budget assessment. Then Anita said, well, in the past, we broke it down like this, and I think one of the Finance Board members said we broke it down. I think if I was to recommend something to you, if you're looking to have people really understand the the high cost of education, I think one article with a whole amount and and voting down that whole amount would be more likely to have citizens vote against the the article. So but that that's a decision you guys need to make. It's been done both ways uh, in the past on town meeting floor.
Okay, is there any other comments? I mean, I just wanna make a quick comment. I I like it broken out simply because, like you said, Ron, a lot of the people that attend town meeting are the same people that attend town meeting, but you know, they know minute your MLC, your transportation, your debt service are those fixed costs. And I think personally, it's more impactful to see what the operational costs are because that that's really what you're negotiating with is is that number. Otherwise, you're gonna have to explain that on the floor, but that's just my opinion. It's it's a board, the board has a preference. Uh, Lyndon, you have your hand up.
Yeah, could could we possibly break it down into two, just the fixed ones that we have to pass and then the
I would say that the way the school presents it is broken down into the four categories and then as a total, I wouldn't quite know which ones that kind of combine. So I think it's either you do all four separate or one is is probably the
All the all the other ones we we're we're bound to pay. The only there's only one that we actually have any kind of liberty with.
Yep. Yeah, well, we could take the three in packaging to packaging those three that are fixed together.
I'm just thinking that might help show the impact, you know, because it's that one big, large number, and then the number that is discretionary and say, look, this is what the school is costing and this is what we have discretion on. And debate that on the floor.
Like you said, that's a
Maybe get both effects.
Yeah, that that's a strategic issue. I I I kind of went back and forth on it myself, Lyndon, as to what the best way is. I I would say in my judgment, having one sum of the total amount showing that higher number would make people go, oh, my God, look how much we're spending on education. When you start breaking it out and only look at the article that deals with operations, they might go, that number's not as high. So but but again, that, you know, that's a strategic decision and I I could go either way on it, you know?
We could even possibly word it just to say that, you know, fixed costs of such an amount with and put it in the same article and then for a total of, but breaking down what's what's the you know, the part that we have to pay and the part that has discretion and still have it in the same article with the same total. And then it's much easier to explain on the floor that this this other number is the number that we can work with.
So let's go, let's go through the the four articles and then, a- again, I don't care which way you guys do it. I I was next.
Well, I guess the other thing I'm concerned on is 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 we really can't vote down the other ones because we're obligated to do it. So if we vote down the article, we're voting down things that we're obligated to to pay. So I don't think we have the ability to vote down those other expenses, the fixed the fixed
So so actually, you do have the article to vote down the total. But if you but but at the end of the day, you're gonna have to pay those minimums, but you know, I think you I I would imagine that an amendment might be something like reduce the total assessment by four hundred thousand or whatever it might be, which will which would be fine in the total as it relates to the article we can't adjust. But, you know, again, I I don't I don't care. I it's really, like I say, it's more strategic in nature, and I think it's a decision of the board as to how they feel. So but can you let's drop down a little bit, Mitch. You'll know in my in my explanations here, just so you know, though, this article funds our regional school district. The minimum local contribution is the minimum amount required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The regional school district is made up of multiple towns. And then they put, this is a fixed cost, letting people know that that's a component of the budget that we have to pass no matter what. Then if you get on to Article Eight, Mitch?
Uh, it's Peter running it, but Leah, you have your hand up. Wanna wait till we're done talking about the school articles if you wanna jump in now?
I just, I'm, it's gonna be quick. I just kind of wanted to reiterate, I think something Lyndon said is include the whole total dollar amount for the school assessment somewhere, you know, at each article or something with that whole dollar amount. And then the note that this is a mandate, you know, a a mandatory um, amount that we pay for each article if we if we keep it separate like this. Um, I kind of am in line with you, Mitch, just keeping them separate. We can discuss after going through, but I do like having that whole dollar amount total multiple places for people to see that, you know, we're spending, what is it, like, almost fourteen million dollars or something um, in the school assessment and how that's broken up.
Well, there's kind of two ways I think we could do that, right? Because that that clearly is gonna be in the motions document, broken down by the amounts, because you notice we don't have the amounts in these articles. That happens in the motions document. I mean, I could put what I expect those motions to be in the first three fixed amounts, because I think we know what those amounts are gonna be. So I could put that in the explanation of each each of the three articles here or each of the four articles here. Uh, but kick to that last one, because because I want to, Article Nine, Peter, if you would. So this last one is the one that we can, we, I'm sorry, Article Ten. Article Ten is the District Operations Assessment. That's the one that's not fixed. You'll see in my note at the end, it says this is not fixed. This is the one, if we wanna focus on the section we can cut, this is the one. Now, the explanation for this was a little tricky. I I put the operational assessment is the amount that the school committee believes is needed to fund the school system. This amount is needed to balance the district's expenditure budget after considering all other available resources. So that's the words they use in the explanation of this. This is, well, whatever we think the expenditure should be, you know, that's what you have to give us in the amount of money. That it's 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 totally optional, it's totally up to them. But that's kind of the way they make it sounded. Oh, this is the amount to balance the budget. Well, this is not the amount to balance the budget. This is the amount to fund everything the school district wants. That that that's what this is. That's what this one section is. So you know, this is where if you if you want to keep them separate and have a battle, this is the this is the article that's gonna be the fight of of what we do. So so that's the two strategies. Or you can have one article up for it and you fight on the one article and just reduce it. That's the kind of two options. But I tried to explain it in such a way that people would understand the difference between the fixed cost and the optional, the non-fixed cost there.
I think it's up to us to, uh, you know, to communicate this at town meeting in as well as FinCom, because we're gonna be uh, what Holden is doing is is both the Select Board and FinCom have voted to not recommend this number. And I think it's appropriate for particularly this year for the boards to take a proactive stance as to how this is going to impact the town. So I I'm I like the way that that Ron put the explanation in. I'm fine personally with having it broken out similar to you, Leah, and and to see those separate numbers. But again, this is our job is to communicate this, right? And we kind of have to take a leadership role there. Um, we can't rely on a document and people that may or may not be reading it um, to be able to explain it. So I think that this is something that we we also have to maybe communicate better to folks at its end town meeting. Does anyone have any preference? I mean, I I'm fine with the way it's laid out personally. I know, Lyndon, you had suggested combining the three fixed cost items into one article and then having the operational cost in another. Does anyone have any thoughts concerning those? Leah?
Um, I I still leaning towards keeping them separate the way that they are, partially because that's how I think historically, at least recent historically, um, the town has been accustomed to seeing them. Also, I think those three fixed cost numbers are gonna be a larger sum, obviously, than what the operational budget's going to be. And I would be hesitant that people would see that larger number and vote no, and then think that they could go with the lower number, where the lower number is actually the part that we would have the most um, discretion to adjust.
Or trying to get them to vote no. So trickery is not out of the question, Leah.
No, 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 we, but if they vote no on the combined, the the mandatory ones, the MCL and the op or the transportation, the debt services, that number is going to be larger than the operational. So if they vote no on the larger amount, that's still, we still would be man like mandated to fund that.
But Leah, that truthfully, that's okay. Because your only obligation is to vote up or down the full assessment. So if you vote if you vote no on the whole thing as a package, you vote no, that's okay. You know, it's only when the budget finally gets passed that whatever you approve, those first costs are mandatory. So you know, that that's why, you know, that's the benefit of having one package, that having all the numbers together would probably make it more likely for citizens to vote no uh, because of the higher number there. But, you know, I I don't know. That's why I I struggled back and forth on this one, too.
Yeah, because, you know, realistically, I think in, well, in reality, you're the only number you really are going over. It's it's not, I mean, operations assessment, what we're just talking about is you know, any excess amount over your minimum local contribution excluding debt, transportation. So your increase in minimum local contribution this year was only seventy thousand dollars and that's being offset by ESSER funding. Uh, so it's, you know, we're looking at, what, like a half million dollars, something thereabouts. Uh, no, six hundred and change. Uh, so that's really the number we're looking at. When you're right, Leah, the total budget amount's gonna look huge.
Yeah, the Article Eleven, the operations article, the number won't look huge. And that might make people more likely to vote for it. That's that's the question. Because the operation part's gonna be a smaller part of the total budget. So when they look at that, they might go, well, the operations part is only, you know, whatever, and and they might vote for it. That that's the that's the, you know, the reason maybe we might want to package it. Just to be clear, again, I don't care, but I just that that's the difference. When they get to that article, they're gonna vote yes three times before they get to that fourth article where they can vote no.
Well, again, I I think however it's packaged, we're just talking about, you know, optics at this point. I think we just need to communicate on the floor, both boards have to be communicating um, to the folks. But again, does I'll I'll ask one more time if the board has a firm preference as to how this is packaged in terms of the warrant one way or another.
Mitch, I just have one other question. Did FinCom have any, um, preferences to how it was packaged? I thought Ron knew.
We haven't talked to FinCom yet. We're meeting with them on Tuesday, so if they have recommendations, we can make that.
Right. No, I just wasn't sure if, um, based on any of the FinCom meetings, if they had a preference. I've I don't remember.
My understanding, just to be clear, is that during normal years, it was broken down into these four components. But because of COVID last year, they packaged it up as one as one article. That's the way it was explained to me. But the normal process that the town, like you say, people might be used to seeing is the way it's broken down right now.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Or we can leave it as is for right now? Okay, Ron, because if we place some of these things tonight, we can change some of these prior to going to legal correct if
Well, I'm gonna go legal. The legal's gonna go tomorrow, but that doesn't mean we can't change it and package it. Because the wording is gonna be the same, really. It's just a, you know, saying all those four things in one article or or one, it's it's not a significant change in the way the article is drafted, so.
Okay.
Guys, change your mind and wanna change it, we just need to do it obviously before it goes out to the public, you know, in terms of the posting and stuff. But eh, this is not, I don't think this is a lockdown today that you have to make the decision to that. Uh, you know, you can put them on and then you can vote to put them on, and then we can change them later if that's your choice.
Okay, so I guess then we'll just, um, we'll move on.
Article Eleven. Uh, vote to repair, this is just debt service for the town. This is a fixed thing. It's just something you have to do every year. You have to have approval to pay for the debt. So that's standard language. Any questions on Article Eleven? Article Twelve? This is the money to basically allow us to operate the water sewer system. So that'll be a, you know, let's see, a enterprise account, that'll be a number and that'll be in the motion that we set up. That's just the enterprise fund. Any questions on this one? Article Thirteen is the cable budget. Uh, there's a separate article to allow cable to operate. And again, there will be a number, the number that was put in our budget books uh, will be the number brought up uh, by FinCom with the motion. But this just funds the cable access uh, account, the enterprise account. Or I think there's a revolving account, an enterprise account. Next one. Any questions on cable? Article Fourteen is interesting because right as of today, we got no money to fund any capital equipment. We're using all the free cash to do the budget. It's here and I left it here to place. And it may be that when we get to town meeting, we just skip this article or hold this article. But if we get America Funds Act and all of a sudden we have some money for capital items, then we would be able to do something here. But as of right now, there's zero money to fund any capital item. So it's kind of a placeholder in case we get some money before town meeting. Any question on this one?
When is the Haight's closing?
We have no clue. So the the just, again, just to be quick on that, you remember there was eighty-eight units.
How the projects has changed. I just didn't know how fast it was getting impacted timeline.
That's gonna slow down the closing date, Mitch, but I don't know what it's gonna be yet. It's after they provide a detailed design plan for all the units. Any on capital?
Um, I think we need to keep this one no matter what, because it's not just, um, for capital, but it's also to authorize the board to apply for, accept and expand any federal, expend any federal or state grant funds or private donations. So.
There's a separate article for that, Leah, that does that. This is only for uh, applies to grants for capital items if we got them. But there is a separate uh, article about allowing us to apply for grants or accept grants later.
Well, there is, there is language in here about eminent domain and easements and interest in land. So I think Leah's question is is valid, whether this needs to stay based on the language.
Yeah, I guess that would be true if we were buying land. But right now, I don't know if we plans to buy any land.
No, but we have to through eminent domain, through our tip project, if that goes forward this year.
Yeah.
We're taking land off of fifty-six, and that money is already set aside from chapter ninety.
Yeah, that's chapter ninety money. Is that considered capital money? Um, just give me a second to think about that. Um.
I think when it's something where you send this to Lauren, you probably just ask her the question if this provides us some protection that we need to keep in.
Yeah, I'll ask her. I I, you know, it's a, it's a good question, because you're right. There there may be some money to take over land under eminent domain for that. I just don't know if that applies to this or not, but I'll have to ask Laura about it. It's a, it's a, it's a good question. Let me look at it and ask her.
Thank you, Leah, for flagging that.
Yeah, I I mean, my other concern or question is just the fact that it's for capital, but it still um, authorizes this, the select board to apply for, accept, um, uh, apply for, accept and expend federal or state grant funds or private donations. And just knowing, you know, for instance, the woods, wood studio, there had been discussion about the wood studio roof, um, trying to obtain grant matching or grant funds for that. I realize that in this case, that's not the the plan currently, but for the upcoming fiscal year, I would hate to exclude this article and then not be able to to utilize anything that might be available, should it come available even after the July first, twenty twenty-one date.
Jeff.
So the explanation, Ron, you uh, you gave, why can't that be worded in the description below? Say, hey, this is this is a place so that we can accept and utilize federal or state grant, it's grant, not grand, right? Grant funds, um, if if applicable, could you, could we explain that in the explanation to the people? This is so that we can use these, should they become available? Because this is, this is just gasoline on a fire when you, like Mitch said, uh, when you start putting in eminent domain and all that other stuff, it's just gonna go on and on and on.
So, so we're gonna, as I say, there is, there's a separate article that allows us to do grants and stuff. Um, so I think that on the other article we're gonna get to, that covers us for the suggestions. I do want to look at the issue here of what Mitch is referring to, the land question about those uh, eminent domain issues with regard to the project that's already being worked on. But we'll talk more about this very shortly when we get to the other article. So there's kind of, this one is really kind of designed around uh, specific types of capital projects, but the other one's much broader in nature. So I think this is standard language, but we gotta, when we get to that article, we'll talk some more about it.
Take the typo.
I'm not, I'm not looking, I'm not looking to take this article out by any means, so if we need to do something with it, at town meeting, we'll do something with it, so.
Fix that typo, grant.
Where's that?
You said state grant funds.
Grant funds.
Could be.
Yeah.
Could be in something different.
That's Article fourteen. I gotta find a, I have a pen with me, but I I will, I'll deal with that. Um, is anything else? We can go to next article?
Keep moving.
Article fifteen is exactly what we were just talking about, to see as the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to apply for, accept and expend uh, any grants or donations from state or federal government or private agencies, individuals or institutions. So I think this covers us for the questions that were asked. Uh, I'm, I think the capital issue is really dealing with maybe, maybe what Mitch was talking about, land transactions. But this Article fifteen encompasses all those donations. So if we got money for the woods roof or whatever, that's all taken care of under this. Um, and you'll see my language, the town routinely gets grants from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and federal government, this article simply lets the town accept these grants. And so, so I think that covers us. I'm not I'm gonna have to look with the Lord exactly why they added that language in the capital account, but but I'll look at it more. Any questions on this one? Article sixteen? This just allows you guys to enter into contracts that are longer than three years. Those are typically very few. They're usually used in things like sewer contracts and water contracts, long-term agreements that by entering into a long-term agreement, uh, longer than three years, the the town can save money by doing that. Uh, you don't have a, a I don't know that you have, you don't have an agreement with a sewer treatment plan or anything like that, like a contractor. So I'm not sure where you guys use this. It's standard language you guys use, but I don't know what contracts you have that are longer than three years in nature in place. So um, there must be something that, because it it made it to an article at some point in time.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Uh, you may, Peter, but I bet I know where you're going with it. Go ahead.
If you're already gonna say it, that's fine. I don't need to. It, you you guys just did it with the, um, the baseball field a couple of years ago, and the soccer field that you looked at recently. All of those are long-term contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. You, you know, I I you'd mostly see these around water sewer agreements. You see ten-year contracts and stuff. But yeah, leasing a baseball field for ten years or something would would justify this, so that makes sense. Any other questions on that article? All right, Article seventeen? Uh, this is the standard article, just to check the, to accept the chapter ninety money. It's the same language every year, but allows us to utilize chapter ninety money for roads and bridges and all that good stuff. Any questions on chapter ninety?
Nope.
Next. Um, this is one that that, uh, our chairman of the planning commission is is on the meeting for. These are revolving funds, and I called up, I looked at Safe Place Budget. Their budget was in that one ninety-two, five forty-four. This allows them to spend up to that amount in their revolving fund. The same thing was true in recreation. That's the budgets that they presented to FinCom. Uh, I called out the other departments, and these are fine. The only question I got, it was raised later, was by Norman David for the planning board. This amount of twenty-five thousand, they believe, is way too low, because when they do subdivisions, they have to hire consultants to review the subdivision plans, and it could be well over twenty-five grand. They have plenty of money in their revolving account to do that, but uh, if you would mind, Chair, can you, okay, so these, so if you would, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay for Norm to speak on the planning board number?
Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to get to, someone's gotta tell Skip that the link works again.
Should be on now.
I'll call him if you want.
Nope, all set. Okay, uh, Norm, uh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, um, for a number of years, uh, our planning board number was set at a maximum of seventy-five thousand dollars. And somewhere, I think it was maybe two thousand nineteen, uh, for some reason which I do not know, and by whose hand I do not know, it was changed to twenty-five thousand. Uh, we're, we are requesting that it be reinstated to the seventy-five thousand. Uh, most particularly, we have now, or very shortly will have, uh, four significant subdivisions in active construction, which is gonna be requiring, you know, a lot of inspections, uh, that we're going to have to pay for out of that fund.
How much money is currently in that revolving fund, Norm? Do you have any idea?
Uh, I cannot give you an answer, uh, for that part. We have a revolving fund, and within the within the planning board, the fund is separated into two accounts. One is an administrative account, and the other one is what we call a consultant or review account. Okay, uh, I I know the administrative account is is somewhere around forty-two thousand. Uh, but we do not use that to pay uh, subdivision engineering fees.
Right.
As far as the consultant account, I I am gonna guess there's probably something over a hundred thousand dollars.
So we do not have to draw any additional money from the budget in any way to increase that number, just for people watching at home?
Yeah.
Plus, increasing that number does nothing, except allow planning board to spend money on the services they need to spend on, which already exists in an account.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I would just go ahead then, and and what do you think is a fair number? Seventy-five, what you're requesting, Norm?
Yes.
Um, I would go ahead and make a motion then to change that number to seventy-five thousand per the chair's request, uh, if nobody has any objections to it.
Wait, then second step motion. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so any further conversation from the board? And then Carol, I see your hand up. I'll get you in a second. Um, I have a roll call vote. Nichols?
I.
Stillings?
Aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
And Recity, I motion carries unanimous. Um, thank you, Norm, for taking a look at this and flagging it, and for your patience in sitting through the meeting and being kicked out and coming back in.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Carol Benoit, I see you have a hand up.
Hi, Mitch, just, um, Pete, Peter might want to hit the record button again, that's all. It stopped recording.
Yes, I will.
Sorry, Clark, that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome.
People watching at home would be confused about what's going on. Yep, Peter?
Which I I do actually have a comment about this. The last two elements on this, the tax title and cable access, come out of a different place from different general laws. The the ones above it, up to and including animal control, all come out of section fifty-three E and a half, which must be allocated every year. But tax title and cable access are operating out of different sections of M G L and do not have the same um, appropriation requirement. So so by passing the previous cable access PEG fund, that is the appropriation.
So we can remove that from this?
No, 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 no. No, no, that that law was recently changed in like the last year and a half for cable. I can't talk to tax title, but I know absolutely that in the last year and a half, the law was changed for cable to require the revolving fund to be approved um, at at town meeting for cable. That 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 was a big issue with me at Southbridge, and the town accountant required the cable to be one of those items that was approved in recent change.
That's interesting, because uh, neither tax title nor cable R X R S are on the bylaw of revolving funds that can be that can be appropriated for.
All I can tell you, Pete, is that, uh, it was, you know, the the finance manager of um, of the town of Southbridge made it very clear to me that because of whatever that new law was, that it had to be approved as a revolving fund, and it was something that literally was just done in the last year and a half or so. So I don't, I don't, I never looked at that statute to see why. But that was what she got from the State Department, Avenue or whatever, so.
We are, we're we're paying for council review anyway.
Yeah.
We just confirm this with Dan and with Lauren.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Peter, does that satisfy your question?
That's absolutely fine. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's move on.
Can you put it back up in a larger viewpoint, Peter? No, hold on a minute. Why is this changing? Okay, you need to reshare your screen, Peter. I I can see it, it's still smaller, but that's all right. Go ahead, scroll. Okay, citizen petition? Oh, I thought I deleted Cleveland Blair, but this is a petition that frankly, I think in general, is Norm still on?
Yes.
Uh, this isn't generally, I'm told that the planning commission is generally in support of it, and I think it makes all the sense in the world. I I was talking with the chairman, I was, you know, I I heard that there was, there wanted to be a restaurant on Main Street in in Blair's property, um, the the market kind of property down the street from Town Hall. And I was told that because it was zoned industrial, you couldn't put a restaurant in there, and it it totally baffled me, because it's a perfectly logical place for a restaurant in a storefront situation on Main Street. And I was told that somewhere along the line, they changed the bylaw to say that you, you know, that you couldn't do commercial uh, commercial buildings in a industrial zone, which I I was baffled, because that doesn't make any sense to me. So basically, all this does is allow commercial property to be done in industrial zones, which is I think, I think accepted kind of everywhere. Um, but that's what this does. And I was told by David that he thinks that the planning commission generally supports this. I don't know why in the past it was deleted, because it doesn't make sense why it would be deleted. This is a common sense planning tool, and if if Norm has any comment, I'd like to hear it, but I think this is a layup in my mind, but unless I, there's something I don't know.
No, I think, do we usually conclude the name of people that?
No, I I I cut it out, but I I guess I forgot to cut it out in the one you got, but.
That's a good way to get it voted down right there, so.
Yeah, no, that's gonna be eliminated, so that, that's gonna be taken out. That's not appropriate.
Okay.
It was, it was just so I could keep track, because it was multiple ones.
I see underneath.
Check of what they were.
Underneath it has majority vote. Now, I want to get this clarified, because you and I spoke earlier about this item, and Leah brought this up a couple of weeks ago. And this is something I had flagged, we've never released that change for majority versus two-thirds. So for zoning, is it now simple majority, or is it two-thirds?
No, it's it's two-thirds, and what this is telling me, Mitch, is that when uh, Beth sent you it, she sent you an older version. Because this was, I changed this to two-thirds in my version, so this is a two-thirds vote.
I don't, I don't think we have the version that you're sharing right now either, because the versions that we have don't have numbered articles, and the articles are not in the same order. So we're going off of what you're sharing on the screen.
You don't have number in articles, the ones you got.
No, uh, the ones that are in the shared drive and.
I have ones from email that have the number articles. They don't have the petitioner's name, and this one says that it's two-third vote with the M G L, but I got that from my email, um, directly and not off the shared drive.
So did we clarify, maybe Norm knows the answer to this, and that's why his hand's raised? Um, what, the the state had proposed to change regarding the passing of zoning in municipalities, and the intent of that was to create a simple majority. Did we clarify what the status of that is? Because at some point, if it's something we have to address, we have to have that conversation. Um, Norm, you have your hand up.
Uh, yeah, I I honestly don't know. I know they did make some changes in the in the two-thirds requirement, but I don't know the details of it. Uh, regarding this particular article, um, I think in general, we would probably say that the uh, the planning board is is going to be in favor of it. However, we have a uh, public hearing coming up on it on the twenty-seventh, which, uh, that will be the time that we will fully vet it. Um, and then make our recommendation.
Um, I I would, I would ask that you please do, uh, because we have businesses going into Main Street, and I I think it's something that this is gonna kind of help change the face of of North Town. So I would certainly want planning boards to weigh in and give their opinion. Uh, that could certainly go wrong, but.
I I I don't know for certain, but uh, I, it was quite a number of years ago now. I I do have at least a vague recollection when we created the light industrial uh, office zone, that uh, we were really looking to reserve areas that we could attract. Uh, I'm gonna say heavier industry, manufacturing, maybe, or that sort of thing. And we probably wanted to kind of reserve it for that sort of thing. Obviously, that just isn't happening in town. Uh, you know, we're not, we're not gonna get a, uh, you know, a plastic manufacturer to come in and and open something. So at this point, i- it makes sense, I think, to change it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? The the warrant I have in my packet is the correct one. And the warrant that I sent out to all the board of selectmen is correct. Somehow, the one that's on that Peter has on the drive is older in nature, because mine doesn't have the names in it, mine has the two-thirds votes. Mine is perfectly accurate, so I'm not sure why the the one on the hard drive there.
I I was sent a different copy from someone else.
Oh, this is not.
Never on the original distribution list. So I just had, I I showed what I have. You want to send me another one, I'll be happy to show it instead.
Yeah, I could, I'm trying to think. If one of you has easier access to your email, that you can email the last one I sent uh, to you guys, that's the accurate one. And you'll see, as Leah pointed out, that it doesn't have Blair's name in it, it has the two-thirds votes, that's the one. Yeah, the one you have is the accurate one that I sent you an email. You have the ability to ship it to Peter really quick?
Uh, let me see if I can find it. Um, well, I'm looking for. Uh, let me see if I can find it. Um, well, I'm looking for it. Mitch, my understanding is citizens' petitions need to be. Placed no matter what as the um, verbiage was submitted to town clerk, right? So I just wanted to, for public, that this isn't really necessarily like discussion about us placing it or not, they're placed, so. Um.
It's more just walking us through, um, and I'm glad Norm was here to provide background, so it's it's placed, but you're right. That's that's a good point to bring up.
Um, you have to vote to place it anyway, but I mean, even though it's required, isn't it, you're required to. To place it, it's not, it's automatically a place that you have to, you're required to place it. That's what I.
No, the the signature has to go to town meeting because the signatures were obtained and it's.
Okay.
It it still would have to go. I I don't want even, I don't wanna broach the idea of not placing this.
But I think you need to place it. I just, I I was just suggesting you vote that anyway.
Oh, of course, yeah, we'll vote, we'll vote to place it.
Yeah.
Um.
All the, just to be clear, all of these zoning changes are all two thirds votes.
Okay. Can we perhaps get clarification on what proposed changes to zoning? That the governor's office put forward and what the status is, because I would like to know prior to going into town meeting. How that's going to change, how that could change, um, just for the board's knowledge.
So according to David in the conversation I went David, I didn't get anything in writing from him. It was changed to require that it all be two thirds votes. That was a requirement. I'll see if David has the section of statute you might be referring to. And we can provide that to the board or to town meeting, if you like.
Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna, now I'm gonna check. I was, I was only reading it um, on the screen. Now I'm gonna. Actually go back to mine to make sure that what the screen says and what mine has are 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 together until Leah finds out if she can move it forward. Uh. So the next one is, I think, Article twenty road acceptance. Okay. So this is one that, it has been a lot of conversation about. These are the two roads in the subdivision that uh, you guys did the layout for last week. The only thing I think we might need here, Anita told me and we gotta get the information, is he said in the past when you guys accepted roads. They had a little bit more detail describing the road, uh, where this just gives the names of the roads. It actually in the past, he says some of the articles actually had a better description of the roads, where they start and where they end. So David's gonna have to give that to us and we can add that to the warrant as well.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions on this one? This is the, I've seen a project that we've, we've talked about over and over again. And right now it meets other requirements and. Uh, I don't know if you could, Norm, well, we can discuss it later, but we're only waiting for that one issue about the access, the. Right away to be able to get on and deal with, I think, a pump station, Norm.
That is correct. We don't have anything in writing, but uh, we do apparently have agreement between. Uh, Joe Buckley and uh, and Mr. Blair regarding that.
Alright, well, that's the one issue we need to just make sure is set for uh, this gets to town meeting. Any questions on the road acceptance item?
No.
Twenty one citizen petition. This is a, this is a little bit tricky because the information we got wasn't very good. Uh, this is uh, an article that essentially is designed to allow marijuana. Uh, growing and uh, I think even selling all the marijuana things to be sold in residential properties. Uh, this I don't believe has any support or well, doesn't have supported the planning board in total. Uh, you'll see on here because he didn't give any cover letter or a real explanation. Um. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the wording on this one, because it looks different than the older ones. I'm gonna read it to you.
Uh. Sorry, I think Peter's pulling up the, the one I just sent.
So go to twenty one, Peter, because that, this one is different. This article twenty one is different than the article that was on that one. This is the updated drafting. Uh, twenty one, eh, you keep bouncing around. Yeah, okay, this is the right one that Peter has now. So Article twenty one is a citizen position. You'll see it says, you see at the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw, Article twelve marijuana establishments. According to the document on file with the town clerk's office for citizen position, for citizen petition. I talked to the citizen who is proposing this and he's gonna bring. That document that's filed with the town clerk's office to town meeting and try to sell his position on this. I know that uh, this is not, there's a lot of people that are gonna be against allowing these activities on farms in. Residential areas, but that is again, it's a petition we have to put it up. Uh, this is the language we use because he didn't give us kind of clear language to put on the ballot. But this is, I talked to him, he was agreeable to this. It made sense to what he wants to do and the more detail he'll explain it to me. Again, it's a two thirds vote. Any question on this one?
I, this just goes in general to the citizen petition um, process in general. My understanding was that. Whatever was submitted was what needed to be, um, the word, the verbiage that was submitted was what needed to be placed. I didn't, I wasn't, I don't know for sure, though. I would like that clarification maybe from legal or whatever, um.
So he sent us pages of stuff to, and and you you're not gonna put pages of things on a ballot. When you do an article, you you describe the general, what the, this does. And then the details are explained. I'm gonna, I am gonna ask the uh, attorneys about this, Leah. But typically, this is the way it's done. It's it's the change of that bylaw section. Uh, and the document, the longer page document is on file at the. Town clerk's office and he claims he's gonna make it available for everybody to discuss that night. Um, but I I, I'm not, I don't believe, and I'll talk to attorney, that we need to put five pages of stuff on the, on the article.
Well, let's just get, let's get clarification there. We wanna make sure that we respect the folks that have taken time to get signatures to get these things placed.
Well, it's definitely there, so, you know, it's.
But I think too, you know, in some ways, if if the petitioner, if this is what the petition does and it makes it clear for folks to understand, we also have to. Let them know what it does, so. Um, but Ron, if you just wanna see clarification on what exactly needs to be placed on that.
I absolutely will, the attorney, but I wanna make it clear that I did meet with the petitioner and discuss this and he was okay with this wording. Um.
Well, it's not just about the petitioner, it's all the folks that signed. Uh, they, we wanna make sure that whatever they sign, they knew what they were signing. And that's being accurately reflected.
Alright, I'll I'll check with the attorney on it and see, um. And yeah, but I think I guess the attorney can make a decision, but.
Norm, you have your uh, your hand up.
Yes, a quick note, uh, once again, we have a public hearing scheduled for uh, April twenty seventh on uh, this bylaw change.
Okay, so there is a public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Article twenty two, uh, the planning commission met, I believe, last night and Norm asked me to hold this and it. He would prefer that they do some more work on this and consider this in the special town meeting in the fall. So when I, the answer is we don't, the recommendation for planning is not to place this article tonight. Any questions on that one? Okay, Article twenty three is a new DEP requirement that we have to place. The town doesn't have to vote for it, but it's required by law to be on uh, the, the uh, the town meeting. Basically says, if you wanna put a new sprinkler system in your yard, you can't do it anymore. It bans. Uh, sprinkler devices after July one of twenty twenty two. Um. And I I think that the concept here is to save public water. Um, but it's a complete ban and Joe Buckley called me and he gave me this thing where it says it's required to be on. Um. I I just, again, I think it's a personal issue, I'd be surprised if people all vote. I guess they.
We're banning sprinklers?
Yeah, you, it it says, so the explanation he gave me was to update the existing water use restriction by law. The prohibition of installation of new, uh, these are not above ground sprinklers, underground sprinkler.
No, but I mean, like, what, wh- what if half of our residents have wells? We we gotta clarify, is this just for public water use or?
It it does say public water, Mitch.
Oh, it's okay.
Public water supply. That puts in the, the section ten, when you read it, it says public water supply.
I don't know if I wanna be the town that bans sprinklers, like, that that's good, maybe that should be on the welcome signs in a Rottland, like, no sprinklers.
Well, I I mean, to be honest, we have water, water cans all the time for this reason, so.
Yeah. Why do we need to do it?
Makes sense. I I wouldn't think it would be that big of an issue, but whoever knows.
But it's not, I mean, I, it sounds like from the guidance that Ron got from Joe is that it. Need, it needs to be placed and voted upon. Is that from Mass DEP? I don't, I mean. I don't, is that, you're understanding wrong?
Doesn't have to be approved, but it has to be placed. Are you familiar with this one, London?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a recommend.
I I have heard discussions about it, but I mean, obviously, it's all tied to the water bans, which almost every town is having every summer. Um, but it does not limit wells, so I I mean, like, like you said, you have to place it regardless and it can be debated on the floor. Voted down or up or whatever, really.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I guess why would we have to place?
The DEP requires it.
No, it's recommended.
No, it's required. He says.
Recommendation.
Well, he tells me you have to place it. It doesn't mean, I recommend it means you don't have to vote for it, but it has to be placed for discussion.
Well, I I want clarification whether that has to be placed, because I'm reading, it says per recommendation of DEP. I have a hard time believing DEP is requiring every town in Massachusetts with public water system to ban sprinklers.
Again, they're not requiring you to ban them, but they're requiring you to put them up for discussion.
Jeff, you have your hand up.
Yeah, again, this is, this is not a lift fuse. It's it's just gonna keep this meeting going into the, the wee hours, uh, yeah. Because it's gonna turn into, why can't we have a sprinkler system? Which I have and I haven't been able to use it because of the uh, water bans every year. Um, my question is, are we spelling installation proper?
I'm sure somebody would flag that, but.
I just tried it on Word and uh, I mean, it doesn't show that it's misspelled, but I think. Two different meanings. Is installation relating to?
Installation is the correct, is not the correct word.
It's install.
I believe so.
Okay, grammar police.
Well, it's in there twice. Let's look sharp.
Yep, let's.
Let's sharpen it up a bit, board.
This is only support the school system even more, saying that we need to increase.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we need more money to the schools.
Yeah, our, your group will be selected, that's, you know.
Alright. Mister Chair, one other thing about this, which I find very interesting, the bylaw committee recently. Completely revamped our water use restriction bylaw. Based on the model from the DEP and it does not have anything like this in their model.
Yeah, I just want clarification on what our actual obligation to this is. Because like, to Jeff's point too, one, i- it's, people are gonna. This could take up an hour and a half at town meeting and if we don't have to, I I just, we have water bans every year. I don't see water bandits outside illegally watering their laws, uh. I don't know. It it just seems like this is government kind of run amok a little bit when you can't get a sprinkler system in, especially when we're paying for water. So, fair enough.
Hey, is that, is that, uh, any other questions on that item?
We're gonna move to not place it.
Well, we're gonna wait till the end, but I I, I I'll place it if we have to place it. I just want clarification on whether this is something DEP requires us to do.
It only tell you that the DPW director made it clear to me that he thought it was kind of ridiculous, but that we had no choice but to place it. That was the way it was explained to me from the DPW director.
We get to pick what laws we enforce. We don't have to listen to D P P. Claire, you've already set precedence there.
Alright, next item, if there's another discussion, Article twenty four. This was on the, I think the special town meeting. This is to allow. Uh, qualified firefighters and part-time police officers become permanent full-time to purchase and receive credit. Beyond five years. This is a positive, this is a, encourage people to become full-time. Or uh, police officers or firemen and it gives them, by buying it back, it gives them. Uh, more benefits in the pension system, but it makes the pension system more expensive, but. You guys already voted to this town meeting, voted on it, but there was some technical problem with it, that it had to be brought back for another vote. This is from the police chief, the prior chief. Any other questions on Article twenty four? Article twenty five. This is the simple one. This is just to expand the historical commission. I think there's six members you guys agreed to to move it up to seven. So this puts it on the agenda for that, on on the warrant. Any questions on that one? Article twenty six, standard language to choose unnecessary town officers and committees. And that is the whole thing, guys. Um. You know, one of the things they asked me tonight is they gave the signup sheet uh, for selectmen to sign. Um. If you guys, I guess you guys have been giving me the authority to sign these. And unless the town clerk tells me I can't sign it, I might have to call you guys in at that, if she says it, it's required to have your signatures for this.
What we've got. We have to wait to sign and provide this because there's a couple items we need clarification on and there's some items that might change, correct? So we place items tonight. We're meeting with Fincom on Tuesday and we have a couple items in here that are placeholders.
So. Again, I think I wanna run that by the town clerk. Again, I think, I'm told you can amend those, so I don't know. That, if that has to be signed by some preset date, but I'll check with Anita tomorrow that.
Well, it's gotta be fourteen days prior to the uh, the town meeting.
Yeah.
Which would be two weeks prior to the eighth. Which. Would be the twenty fourth, unless we're just talking about.
Yeah.
Business days.
Hey, Chuck, I can answer this and I'll, I'll, I'll send it to you, the answer, so you have a clear decision. I don't think it's gonna be the week I'm away, but I wanna make sure you guys have it and it gets done correctly, so I'll check with Anita. And and um, we'll get you a clear answer tomorrow on the signature, when the, when the signatures have to be done.
Okay, so just to recap, and I see Jeff and Leah, your hands up, so just to recap real quick. Um, Article twenty two, planning board is requesting uh, to not have that added to the warrant. And then Article twenty three um, was the sprinkler item, uh, that it's, it sounds like we might want some more clarification on. Uh, so everything else. The items that might need to be changed, we can, if you want, we can appoint or uh, I'm sorry, place everything else as a slate. If the board so chooses, and then it sounds like Ron, we can make adjustments to those prior to it being finalized.
That's what I've been told.
Alright, Leah and then Jeff.
Thanks. Um, I was just, I went back to the kind of timeline that Anita had provided us. Um, a few meetings ago and it looks like the twenty third, Friday the twenty third is the last day to post special and annual town meeting warrants. Um, I had a question. Are we not having, since we have a. Free cash from last year, are we having a special town meeting and do we need to do that appropriate um, those warrants also? I think usually the specials are just appropriating the free cash from previous.
So the answer in the discussion is with the town accountant is we don't need to have a special meeting. The first two articles um. Is is um, well, the free cash is gonna be allocated in the budget, so that's gonna happen later, but. The articles that we generally done in a special meeting are articles, the um, snow and ice article. Which we're gonna do, uh, you know, at the very beginning. Uh, but I think that's the only article, the only, the only other type of article that would be here if there was one is unpaid bill, bills from previous years. So in his opinion, we don't need to have a special meeting. We can all do it as one meeting.
My question was some of the free, the, um. Never, I'll I'll look and then I'll ask again, sorry.
The answer, I think, is there's no specific free cash alloc, you know, allocations in here. Just that it's gonna be utilized in the budget document, so I think that's gonna be taken care of. Uh, in the budget document, it's in Article five, that's where that will happen if there's any. There's no, usually, I think in the past, you might have. A free crash article to fix a roof or do something. None of that is occurring. The free cash is just being used in the budget document.
The article two, real quick before we do anything else.
Yeah.
Um, do we not handle transfers at the end of the year as a, as a transfer? I mean, I would.
Now, he said that he cleans up those accounts, uh. And and I guess you're correct, the the transfers can be done in the last quarter, but he said for this transfer. Um, to put money in the snow and ice deficit, that it had to be done uh, at the town meeting and he. Uh, approved me putting it in his article two.
Uh, Dan, Dan did?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, uh, Jeff.
Um, thank you. So, my understanding that the historical commission submitted two warrant requests, one for scenic. My understanding that the historical commission submitted two warrant requests, one for scenic roads. What happened to that?
So. So there was a, there's a lot of concern expressed to me that. You know, people, the general public has not had an ob- observation, or I'm sorry, and. A time to be able to weigh in on this issue, Jeff. So in the scenic road article, it effectively tells people who live on those roads that they can't fix walls. And make changes to their property without going through a, a, a process.
Right.
So, so it was agreed. I talked to Peter about it. I talked to Norm and the planning commission. It was agreed that they were gonna hold a joint. Public hearing to hear the views of citizens who live on those roads. And the issue would be taken up at the fall town meeting.
You talked to Peter, Peter?
Yeah, yeah, I talked to Peter about it and had a long conversation with Norm. And I told Peter to call Norm. I arranged for them to get, to have a meeting, a public hearing on it.
Thank you. I was not aware. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board members? Questions about the process? All right, so hearing none, uh, we've, we've run through the articles. Do we want to place the articles that we do not have questions about this evening? As a slate? Leah?
Um, I, my vote would be yes to place as many as possible tonight, but. Another one that we have a co- a question about, I think, is article fourteen, the capital budget, the C I P C budget. Um, I think we're operating that we, we will place that one, um, and ask for legal clarification, but I just. I'm going through my notes as we went through everything and that's something that jumped out at me.
Article fourteen is standard language. I think you want to keep it on there and place it. In case something comes up. I just don't think, as of right now, there's nothing coming up, so I think the worst case scenario. Is that we pass the article and just skip by it, but I think you want to have it on just in case something comes up later. So I think it's important to have it there.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, so hearing none, um, you know, I'll go ahead and, and make a motion to place. All of the articles tonight with the exception of twenty-two. And twenty-three. As a slate.
So moved.
Could you, could you explain what those do I real quick, or do I have to scroll again?
Yep, article twenty-two, uh, Jeff was the, the zoning change that the planning board. Um, I think did submit and now wishes to have removed from the warrant. And twenty-three, uh, was. The sprinkler enforcement.
I'm good with that and, uh. Twenty-one on the marijuana, I'm knowing all, all things marijuana, but whatever the world of borders is.
The, just, just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, what I'm gonna do is keep the warrant in the same order. Until we finalize it, so we don't have to take it out, put it back in and rearrange it. But it, you know, I'm, when I, we hear the final document. If, if it's agreed that the sprinkler thing will go back in, it'll stay in the same position.
Yeah, let's just make sure we note which ones we, we did not vote to place, you know, I don't want to be a grad school study twenty years from now with. Some M P A student talking about the town in Mass that banned sprinklers.
There you go.
That's not, I don't want to be a footnote in that, that policy book.
Yeah, I, I suspect truthfully that, that I'm gonna have a statute or some regulation or something from D E P that says we have no trace, but. But I'll, I'll check that out tomorrow.
And that was just gonna be my only question or clarification for the motion and second was that twenty-three would just be pending. Um, clarification.
Right. I mean, obviously if we have to place it, we'll place it, but I, I just want.
I mean, Joe was telling me that every town has to do it, so. That, that leads me to believe that it has to be done, that every, if it, this is going to every town. It leads me to believe it has to be done, but let me, I'll verify it to make sure. I mean. We shouldn't have to guess. We should have the actual statute or whatever it is that requires it.
Great. Okay, uh, we have a motion in a second. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Stillings?
Uh, Stillings is aye, refusing on the, uh. The one regarding the historical commission, as I remember.
Understood. Um, so that was a recusal from that one article. Got it.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Whitman, uh, Leah, did I already call you?
No, Whitman, aye.
Uh, Clark?
Aye.
And Recidi, aye, uh, motion carries unanimous. Um, the one other item we have to tackle is just to vote to, uh, hold the meeting, uh, at. Six P M on Saturday, May eighth.
Mr. Chairman, just one last comment on another article, on the other acceptance. What I would say to you, if I get you the information. And if in fact it is required to place article twenty-three. You might want to just remember to throw that on the agenda for next Tuesday night's meeting. So that it gets placed and you don't have to worry about any other meeting.
Yep. Okay, uh, do we have a motion to start the meeting at six on Saturday?
So moved.
Second, Stillings.
Any discussion? Um, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Stillings?
Stillings, aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Recidi, aye, and Ron, if you can, as soon as you get back from, from vacation or whatever you have now. Uh, please send us the plan for what town meeting is physically going to look like this year. I know you've been working with the fire chief.
So let me talk about that just one second. So I met with Mike Moriarty today. Because I, I, I wanted somebody to take leadership on that issue. So I'm meeting at ten o'clock with, with Mike Moriarty, with Anita, with Seth, with Scott Gilroy and, um, Rich. To, to go over that and sort of get that in place. So Mike Moriarty is gonna be my lead on that issue. The concept, I think, right now is to keep it inside the auditorium. And I told Mike to call the school system. And see what rooms might be available so that we can have them in, in multiple rooms if there's overflow. The only concern is we gotta figure out, because those voting machines that they used in the past. We're a little concerned if they'll go through the cement walls at the school system.
Yeah, that was the issue we had last year.
Yeah, so I asked Mike to test that as well. So, you know, I think I'm, I'm pretty comfortable that Mike Moriarty will do a good job. In putting that all together and he's gonna be, I'm gonna meet with them all tomorrow and they'll be meeting on that, on next week to figure out. The best possible process, so that's, that's, that's. Ongoing in, the formal meeting will be tomorrow and if you have any questions, Mike will be the lead guy on it.
Great, okay, any further questions from the board? Uh, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and again. Just be a reminder that, uh, I think the cutoff, uh, Ron, would be tomorrow for the posting for Tuesday's meeting. So if we can get Beth to post. Because Monday is a holiday and we do have a second warrant, so that, we'll keep that agenda light, because I know everyone's tied up at these meetings. Everyone's going to FinCom. Um, so we'll have, uh, uh, the warrant and then FinCom come in to review these articles to make sure there are no concerns.
So to that issue, maybe we have to, i- if we have to do it tomorrow, hopefully I can get that answer. About article twenty-three first thing in the morning. But if, if I can't get that art, answer quick, I might throw it on the agenda. And then if, again, if, 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 if Joe doesn't give us a clear answer in law, you guys can just hold it again, okay? At least we don't have much time to get it back on the agenda.
Yep. Jeff?
Uh, can we square away these Zoom issues now? Who's, uh, we had an important meeting last night, uh, scheduled for the historical commission. And it overlapped entirely with FinCom and it was just a, just a mess.
No, no.
Can we have a facilitator square this away a little bit?
That's not, that's not exactly, as I understand it, gonna happen. So I've set up a specific Zoom account for FinCom, so. The historical meeting and FinCom shouldn't overlap in any way. Peter called me as he was trying to get on the historical mission and he incorrectly remembered the password. And then, you know, it, in, once I gave him the correct password, he was able to get on. But it took, you know, fifteen minutes or so for that to happen. And then I don't know what happened after that, but. If somebody overlapped a meeting, it surely wasn't FinCom because they have their own unique Zoom.
That, well, the link on the, uh, the posted agenda went right into FinCom. So can, can we just have a facilitator to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll check. But, but, yeah, I, I created a brand new. Account for FinCom and, and other than Tamika and Peter. FinCom is the only one that has that account. I, nobody, none of their towns does it. They did that to get through these finance meetings. And after that, we can let other groups share them, but I'll check.
Maybe just the wrong link was posted, Jeff, that might have been.
It might have been the wrong link, uh, but. You know, the way, uh, you know, Peter Crane and Tamika, if we could get someone at that level to welcome people in.
Yeah.
It would help for these boards.
Peter's on, now, Peter, do you know what happened last night?
I do not. I hadn't even, o- other than hearing about. The, the problems logging in, I hadn't heard of any actual problems last night. Tonight's a whole different problem. Tonight was in fact historical commission kicking us off.
The fourth, anniversary committee or the historical commission? The fourth.
Oh, fourth, I'm sorry. I'm, my mistake. I don't want to blame the wrong board.
Oh, the Fourth of July committee?
Go ahead, Tamika.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I think the issue last night is that. Planning board and historical commission both scheduled their meetings under the El Paradise account. So the planning board started at six thirty, historical commission started at seven. And they weren't able to get in because planning board was already hosting, so I think that. Maybe it would be helpful to. Limit or identify the folks that are getting on and scheduling meetings, because I think a lot of people are not paying attention that they're putting multiple meetings on the same account. And there can only be one at one time on each account.
Well, all of that is supposed to go from the committee chairs. I had. Sent out letters to everybody that they had to. Work with Beth in my office to make sure that the, uh, meetings didn't overlap. So I'll talk with Beth again tomorrow, but it sounds like. One of the boards chose not to call Beth and just set the meeting.
Well, e- even if they had, I think there's a, there's a core conflict, because tonight's meeting. Is done with the recurring select board meeting, which is supposed to be Monday night, so this meeting is actually off schedule. And I don't know how someone would know it was going to happen, because this wasn't even posted until, what, two days ago? So if. Anybody else had previously had done it two weeks ago, had s- scheduled, they couldn't see it.
Yeah.
All right, so this, uh, you know. This conversation's going on and this is twenty twenty-one. Somebody. Ron, just have somebody figure it out.
Yeah, I'll talk to Beth tomorrow.
On the right link.
And find out what happened and see if we can do it. I mean. We can set up a process, but people also have to follow the process, you know? They can't just automatically decide they want a meeting, not tell my office and then post it. And then do it and then we, we get boxed out, so. I mean, I'll, I'll leave, check the process, I'll re- and, and remind everybody about the process.
Or, or stand by, just so you can welcome, you can, we need an orchestrator for that, Ron. You know, if you've got to stick around, stick around. And we have a state senator standing by. And it's embarrassing. I said, I'm sorry, I, we couldn't, uh, couldn't have the meeting. We have to postpone it because. A link or something.
For the staff that has like the secretaries, I mean, that's fine. When we have meetings in person, like, you know, it's not fair to town staff to have them, have to have them usher people in every meeting, because. We're going to meetings every night, everyone's got meetings every night. We're meeting in person, C I P C doesn't have anybody to facilitate, so we just need to, Ron, if you can just. Figure out and send out clear direction as to this needs to be done and this is how you access this account. Um, and have Beth set something out. Um, to get everybody squared straight, so that, you know, what Jeff was saying doesn't happen, because I agree with him that that can be embarrassing. Uh, Leah?
What's the cost for more, for additional Zoom accounts? I mean, I know that we have no money, but if. The Zoom accounts are.
We should stop there. I know we have no money, but, uh, but no, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, if the Zoom account issue is kind of. In, uh, inhibiting town government from functioning, different aspects of it, then that's an issue, and so. If we can't meet in person, then we need to make a commitment to get this straightened out, and if that involves. Finding two hundred dollars for another license or whatever that dollar amount is, then I think we need to make that commitment, so that town government can.
And I think what we also need to talk about too, Ron, is what we can look at. Um, we do have to have a plan to go back to in-person meetings. Now, we're gonna be at the point. Probably in the next month or so, where every adult that has wanted a vaccine is gonna be able to have had one. And our clinics are gonna be winding down at some point this summer. Um, and I think we need maybe a reopening plan for our public boards and commissions, and Jeff, that's gonna solve a lot of these issues. Um, we're still gonna have to option, uh, offer maybe a virtual option. For folks, but I think some of the logistics are gonna figure themselves out once we have that plan in place, so. That's something we can put on an agenda and talk about, but Ron, you want?
So we've, we've been discussing that already and the, the concept is, is the weather gets warmer and nicer, that they're gonna. Move it out of the library completely and, and probably do it over at the Heitz property and such. So I know that Seth is working on that now, him and Rich. Uh, I think we're probably, I think you're probably a month away from that, but we're getting closer. So that is, and I, I'm gonna say it clearly, that I think. Cause I, and actually I know, because I sent it out, I sent out kind of the rules for using these Zoom accounts. And I suspected. Following the rules, so I don't think they're, I don't think it's a lack of. Rules, I think it's a lack of people following them, so I'm gonna have to. Remind people that they have to follow the process that was set up. I don't think it's a new process. I think it's followed the process we already have in place and we won't have problems, but. I think people go, they're in a meeting, so, okay, when you guys all want to meet? Okay, let's meet Thursday. And they don't look at what even is on Thursday's agenda, and then they go and post the meeting. That's what's happening at different meetings. Particularly things like, not the big formal meetings, but the. The kind of ad hoc, you know, three hundredth anniversary, Fourth of July, those kind of meetings where. You know, they just go, okay, when, when are you guys available? And that's how it happens, so. I'll have to remind people again, that's all.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I think we already had a motion in a second.
Oh, a second.
That was our discussion.
No, I don't think we, we did. We didn't take a first or a second for German. The last one we made was the articles.
This is on the six o'clock issue, right?
No, just a motion to adjourn. Nobody needed.
All right, well, let's just redo the motion in the second, uh, to make sure we're covered if anyone remembers. Um, if not, we're gonna have to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is this on the six o'clock issue, Mr. Chairman?
What?
Is this on the six o'clock issue?
We, we voted on that, that.
You have another issue?
Okay, I just didn't know if we, you're voting just on a motion to adjourn, is that what you're doing?
A motion to adjourn. Yeah, I gotta go order a sprinkler system, I guess, before July, so I gotta get out of there.
Tell you mine has never been used.
Go. Uh, we'll have a roll call vote. Nichols?
Nichols, aye.
Stillings?
Aye.
Whitman?
Whitman, aye. Thanks, guys.
Clark?
Aye.
And Recidi, I, motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everybody, and have a good.